You're watching CHCO TV's gavel to gavel coverage of the April 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Florence Mitchell. In today's meeting, Charles Coders, manager for Atlantic Canada at Brunswick Exploration, will make a presentation to council. Under new business, councillor Heislip will provide a monthly update on the world's oldest basketball court. Council will consider a submission by the St. Andrews Historical Society to the St. Andrews Civic Trust, which proposes re-establishing a provincial court in the St. Andrews courthouse. Council will review the second draft of the purchasing card policy and a sample of a SMART goals worksheet. Council will also review a draft resolution regarding delegation of authority to waive interest charges on utility accounts. Finally, Mayor McKeckern will provide an update on the Community Safety Standing Committee. Now let's join council in the Moosehead Room at the Garsoen Civic Centre in St. Stephen.
Okay, welcome everyone to the Municipal District of St. Stephen Committee of the Whole Meeting, Wednesday, April 10th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Okay. Okay, so everyone's here. Councillor Cornish has another meeting he had to attend tonight, and we have councillor Otis online. So be patient with me online, so I don't, I might sometimes forget, so someone sometimes remind me. She's up there. Okay, before we begin, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on the ancestral unceded territory of the Pechtaun Makati peoples. So, I've got a mover and seconder for the proposed resolution that the agenda of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, April 10th, 2024, be approved. Councillor Harding, councillor Eastman. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Any conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none? Mover and seconder for the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held, excuse me, held March 13th, 2024, be approved as presented. Deputy Mayor Wheaton, councillor Heislip. Any questions on that? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Well, there we go. So now we got a public delegations. Charles Codors, Geo Manager, Atlantic Canada for New Brunswick Exploration, B R W. And welcome. And the floor is yours for you, sir.
Excellent. Can everyone hear me? Well, thanks. Thanks for having me. Wonderful to be here and have everyone's time and attention and great to see people out here attending as well. So great work and as well as everybody online. Yeah, I'm here to basically introduce myself and Brunswick Exploration to explain sort of who we are, what we do, and why we're here in St. Stephen. So I guess we can kind of go to the next slide here. Excellent. So Brunswick Exploration is in the mineral exploration and development. And we're basically one of the larger companies in Canada, sort of aggressively and systematically going through and trying to find new discoveries of lithium. And if people have heard about lithium or what is it? It's the lightest element basically on the periodic table, the lightest metal. And you need it for batteries. So it basically makes things charge faster and hold their charge longer. So I see computers here. We have cell phones, so we all use it. The important thing to keep in mind and sort of where we're going as we try and get greener and decarbonize is that we need more of these products in Canada. Most of lithium right now, where it comes from is you're looking at South America, China, and Australia. So as we can all appreciate, we need more of those products here in Canada. Currently, there is only one mine that's in operation in Canada, which is in Manitoba, which is also Chinese owned. So that's really the importance here of us being really more in control of our resources here. So that's what we're looking for. So we've also, our group previously worked in Southern New Brunswick. We had some mineral claims from Westfield all the way to St. George. So I am very familiar with the area somewhat. My parents now live in St. John, so I've definitely spent some time in Southern New Brunswick. I'm originally from Southern Ontario. I am a registered geologist here in the province as well as six others. Because as I mentioned, we're all over Canada. We made three discoveries last year, three in Quebec, which is pretty exciting. We also completed a bunch of prospecting, soil sampling, and drilling throughout Canada. And we're part of a larger group called the Osisco Group, if you've heard of them. We've been involved in multiple commodities all over Canada, right from B.C., the territories across to Newfoundland. Of interest, I know today we're in the Garsoan Centre, which is beautiful, my first time. Bill, who donated that, his nephew works for our group, Eric. So he's a resident. You might know his mom. I don't know. I don't know her name, but anyways, kind of neat to have that connection. Again, the group has a strong record with communities, First Nation, and environment. You know, we have a passion for exploration, very strong, and also in development, if projects get to that stage. So as I mentioned, we've got lots of demand now for lithium, mostly for EV cars. Everyone's seeing that, electric cars, we're trying to go more green. And we're seeing more investments in the space. We're seeing a lot of battery plants open up in Quebec. So basically, we've got that sort of upstream starting, but we need to find the product to feed these new plants that they're making. That's really the issue. So there's just simply not enough lithium right now to meet demand, let alone in Canada. As I mentioned, we only have one mine right now. Next slide, please. These are our projects. I want to give a brief overview. Today was really an introduction. I don't want to get too deep into Brunswick or projects. I don't know how much people know about exploration and mining, so I want to give sort of an overview and just an introduction in general to us and what that looks like. So as I mentioned, we have projects from Saskatchewan across to Newfoundland. Myself, I look after everything outside of Quebec. I didn't put up our projects in Manitoba and Ontario because we didn't find too much, so they're not really going to be a focus going forward. So as you can see, we have some projects in Saskatchewan. A bunch through Quebec, we made those discoveries, mostly in the James Bay area. And we just announced more projects in Labrador as well as Greenland. We just got entered into, which is exciting. And of course, today we're here to talk about St. Stephen specifically. We're based out of Montreal, that's our corporate office, and we have a satellite office in Bathurst, which is where I'm based out of. I've lived there for six years, and I've worked for the group for that period of time. Next slide, please. I wanted to go over mineral and surface rights to sort of understand them. You know, there's a lot of people that think that if you own a home, you own the minerals underneath, and that's not the case in Canada, and it's been that way for many, many decades. So how it works is that there are mineral rights and there are surface rights. So everything below the bedrock is called a mineral right, and everything above is called a surface right. And they basically overlap. They're two separate things that overlap. So basically, the entire province is gritted out in a 400 by 400 meter grid of mineral rights. And on those mineral rights, you might have a number of different properties. They could be crowned, they could be private, but they're not the same size as a private property or crown land. They're two separate areas entirely, okay? So the minerals are actually owned by the government of New Brunswick. They're not owned by any company at any point in time. You only get a right to explore. You never actually truly own these things, same with the landowner. So mineral rights can be acquired by anybody in this room. All you have to do is sign up. You just basically pay a fee to be a prospector, and you can go online, and you can basically click on the area you're interested in, if it's available, and you can pay a staking fee per hectare, and now you have the mineral rights. It's that simple. The thing is, you can't just go and stake out the whole province. You have to now do meaningful work. You have to do things to that property. Some of it could just be as simple as walking on the property and looking for, looking at rocks, or it could be drilling a hole. There's many different types of work and surveys that we can do. But you have to put work into the ground to keep that right to explore. These mineral right holders, and once you stake a ground, you have to reach out to the surface right holders. They have obviously rights through this. You can't just do whatever you want on someone else's property. That's not how it works. There is a mineral act of New Brunswick, so everything we do needs to go through permits, needs to go through notifications with surface owners and with everyone else involved. So when you do stake ground, you need to send out a letter to those surface owners to notify them that their mineral rights have been staked. I mentioned about the work. And of course, if you decide that, you know, a company or somebody wants to do work on a surface owner's ground, both that person who wants to do the work and the service owner need to come up with an agreement. Again, you can't just go and do whatever you want. We all have rights, and it's really working together on how we can move forward and both be happy. And of course, as I mentioned, there is the New Brunswick Mining Act. Permits are required, and these permits go through archaeology, First Nation, environment, all these different departments to get work approved. It's not just one department. All these departments together have to approve work that we do. And of course, these permits are only required for what we call ground disturbance, and that's work basically using heavy equipment. So if you're not using heavy equipment, so you can collect a shovel full of dirt or take a rock sample, there's no issues there. You don't need permits for that work. And the thing why I'm here today, that sort of kickstarted things quickly, I'm sure everyone in the room knows about the amalgamation, which is fantastic. The mineral claims that we have previously were not within the municipal boundaries, and now they are. So because we are now within the municipal boundary, we now need town consent to do any ground disturbance. That's part of the act. So that's why I'm here today to describe who we are and what we're doing and sort of how we can work together on this alongside the government. It's really both the government, ourselves, and yourselves that need to work together to go forward if we want to do any type of ground disturbance in the area. Next slide. So I wanted to talk a bit about our project. I still want to describe sort of the exploration and development in general because it can be a bit confusing and overwhelming for people who don't know a lot about it. For the project right now that we have, it's what we call grassroots. It's stage one of stage one. It literally involves people walking through the bush and trying to find rocks of interest. So it's as early as it gets. Typically, from discovery to, let's say, production, actually taking those minerals out of the ground, you're looking at about 10 to 20 years. It's a very, very long process, and just because you find something interesting does not mean it's economical, does not mean you have a mine. It's just a showing and an interesting rock. You need to do a lot more than just that. So we're talking a big timeline before anyone's even talking about extraction. This project I'm going to talk about today is step one of year one. So it's about as early as you can get. We have a discovery, you know, what's next? So I'll get into that a bit. So what have we sort of done so far? So the past work we've done last year, as well as what we're looking to do going forward, is what we call low impact. It's mostly prospecting and soil sampling, and that's literally somebody going on foot and collecting fist-sized samples of rocks and shovelfuls of dirt that you put in a bag. You take those samples, you send it to a lab, and then you find out if there's anything of interest in there that you're looking for. Here again, we're looking for lithium, for batteries. Next things, as you continue down to try and get more confidence in your project, you do things called diamond drilling. So you drill, you know, holes about this size into the earth to try and see what's underneath the ground. We don't know what's underneath there, so you have to drill holes. You can do other techniques like stripping, where you pull back all of the dirt on top of the bedrock to understand what that bedrock looks like. That's another technique you can do. And as you continue to do this and do more drilling and do more studies, you need to do other types of engagement and collaboration. So that's with First Nations, communities like we're doing today, environmental impacts, and so forth. Economic studies are another part. You know, you can find, for example, lithium, but if it doesn't have enough size and if it doesn't have enough quality, there's nothing economical here. Again, it's just a showing. It's great, but it's never going to be extracted. So you have to do all these studies. So let's say we go through and we have these studies and you have something economical. Well, now you have to obtain the financial capital, not unlike the project here for the Garsoan Centre. You now have to find out, where am I going to get that capital to now build the infrastructure needed to extract those minerals? Once you get past that 10 or 20 years, let's say you can actually get a mine in place or an open pit in place. Now you can look at actual lithium extraction. The wonderful thing about lithium is that it's boring. And what I mean by that is there's nothing really exciting in it, which is a good thing. So there's no arsenic that's required like you would in gold. There's no sulfides like you'd have in base metals, so there's nothing to worry about in terms of acid drainage. They're really not much different than open pit quarries. You're mostly dealing with quartz and feldspar, which are things that you get in everyday sand, basically. They're quite boring. They're basically granites, which is again, a great thing. And if you guys have heard of tailings ponds and things like that, we don't really need to do these things anymore. We call them dry stacked tailings, limited water, and it's basically just material that's piled up that's dry. So we don't need to do anything like that either. They're really much smaller footprints. If a project, any project goes for it. And of course, at the end of the life of mine, we then do site closure and remediation, and keep in mind, permits have to go through in all the departments to do all these things. So we don't just go and do whatever we want. We have to be approved for all these processes. Next slide, please. So that was ballpark how it works from discovery to production and closing a site. And by no means are we there. As I mentioned, we just right now have made a discovery. That's it. So what I'm showing you here are the mineral claims, so not the surface rights, the mineral claims. And if you're wondering why they're not blocks, if you look at sort of the jagged step patterns, that's about a block, if you can visualize that. So that's sort of a 400 by 400 meter block, if that makes sense. So those are a bunch of blocks into larger, we'll say cells, a bunch of cells into those larger blocks, okay? And I wanted to show this to you today because it's a conversation not just with Brunswick Exploration and with the town of St. Stephen, it's with other people. We're not the only people that have mineral claims in this area. That's what I wanted to show. So underneath, you can see where I have the municipality here in purple or peach. You can see basically how much larger it is, and that's really the addition of Ward 1 or 2. Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm assuming that I think 2 or 1 and 3, I think it is. I think 2 is the original. Thank you. So it's really the addition of 1 and 3 that's really expanded quite a bit to the north. And you can see here where it now lies, Brunswick's claims overlap with the municipality. I also want to point out Ryan Cult, who has a number of mineral claims here in red. Galway Metals, if you're familiar with the Clarence Stream Project, they've been doing some drilling on their property. Vision Lithium, even though it's a lithium company, they're actually here looking at the St. Stephen nickel play, nickel copper plays. So even though it's a lithium company, they're not actually looking for lithium there. And then I'm going to put attention to this red circle. This is really the area of interest where we've made some interesting findings. And again, you want to start large and really start to focus in on a smaller areas, things are more interesting. So that's really what this process is showing you here and who's in the area. Next slide, please. And again, just to sort of zoom in on the area, I don't want to get into too many specifics, but where is it located? It's located just up Highway 740 towards the Hyman Hill Splan Pond area. There's a glamping outfit that's right on Splan Pond. If anyone stayed there at their beautiful geodesic domes, they're quite nice. We've stayed there before. And basically, the process and how this all started, I first took a look at this property in 2021, actually, to look at some of the tin potential. And it was really in 2023 that Keith Holmes made this discovery. Keith is a native to that area. He doesn't live here anymore, but if anybody knows Keith Holmes, he is local to that Hyman Hill area. He did make the discovery. I think there might be a Holmes Road somewhere up there, too. I think that's his family, yeah. So anyways, we ended up doing a deal with Keith to have the right to explore on his land. And that was the first lithium discovery in New Brunswick, so it's pretty significant. That's the third in Atlantic Canada. So it's a pretty big deal. There's only another showing in Yarmouth, Nova Scotia, as well as in Newfoundland. So pretty exciting for New Brunswick, first one ever. So we did low-impact prospecting, rock and soil sampling. We did consultation with the Lucekui and the Passamaquoddy already, and we also did some surface owner consultation on that area of interest. Next slide, please. So again, today was really just an introduction. I just want to say hi, explain a bit about what we're doing, how exploration works. And I'd really like the opportunity to come back again, maybe at another meeting, to talk a bit more specifics about the project and sort of where we're hoping to take it to or what some of our plans are. We want to continue prospecting and soil sampling. That's going to start again in a few weeks. All the snow is gone. There's no leaves, so it's a great time to get out in the field. And obviously, First Nation consultation is always ongoing as well as community. And you're also going to be reaching out with the Ministry of Natural Resource and Energy Development next week. They're going to give you a more in-depth, basically, discussion on how surface and mineral rights and claim staking works, so that dovetails nicely into this introduction. And St. Stephen isn't the only community where this has impacted mineral exploration. As I'm sure you guys know, it also has impacted things like forestry, things like hunting, things like agriculture. So you know, the expansions impact a number of different departments, not just that. So a great example is Woodstock, the manganese battery plays in Woodstock. We're not in the municipality and now are. So those discussions are much more advanced than here. So if there's ever another community to reach out to, Woodstock would be a great one because they've had the same situation as well as Dalhousie. So there's a number of different communities this is happening in as well. And the important part is working together to go forward together, basically. And of course, as I mentioned, another invitation, I'd love to meet again, have another chance to come and see everyone and talk more about the project, and happy today to answer any questions that I can. Unfortunately, the representative from the government couldn't come today, but thankfully, they're going to be here or they're going to connect with some of you next week to talk more about any questions you have for them. Thanks for your time.
Can I ask a couple? After you state your claim, what about the timing and the effects on the owner of the property? Let's say I own the property and I was thinking about developing something. Like, can you still develop while you got the claim on it?
Oh yeah, it changes absolutely nothing. Your rights as a surface owner don't change at all. You can do whatever you want on that property. And remember, if somebody who owns a mineral claim wants to do any ground disturbance, we have to come up with an agreement. It has to be a written agreement on the same page. It can't just be verbal. It has to be written. Once that agreement is done, that's written, that is then given to the government to get your permit to do that work. So we can't do work until we've had an agreement, the company and the surface owner. So do what you want to do on your land, absolutely.
Sort of answer my next question, compensation, that would be in that agreement, then?
That's right. That's right. And depending on what the type of work is, a lot of that stuff could be in kind. It isn't always just a monetary thing. Let's say it's a woodlot. Maybe you would like me to cut down some trees for you while I've got a dozer in the area. These are the types of things you can do, right? It really depends on the situation, where the work is, what your land is. We really try and stay in forested areas to not really impact anybody. I mean, we're not here to impact homeowners. It's really trying to stay in the more forested areas.
Greenlaw?
Yeah, I had a couple. First off, the dry tailings, just wondering, like, if there's, what kind of hazards are there around dry tailings?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And again, that's quite a ways down the road. In terms of dry tailings, chemically, not much, as I mentioned you. You know, the really thing is really just stability, I guess. If someone isn't doing a proper slope stability on them, no different than doing a pile of anything else. So but in terms of chemicals, as I mentioned, there's no arsenic that's used in lithium extraction. There's no sulfides because these aren't base metals, so it's not much different than quarries.
So then, when you're done mining and you need, you know, some type of restoration or refurbishment, do you guys have a decommissioning fund that you have to put aside while you're mining so that you can't walk away from it and it be unfunded?
Yeah, it's a really, really good question. And basically, it's usually a bond. You have to put, I believe, a bond upfront. This would be a good question to clarify with the government because we are not at that stage, but you would have to put up some sort of bond upfront to make sure that when you're gone, there is money in place to deal with all of the closure and closing of the site.
The last one would be, what if the landowner says, "No, I don't want you doing any exploration on the land"?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So with the landowner, if the landowner says no, what you can do is you can then go and have a conversation with, let's say, the mining commissioner to see if there's something else you guys can do, almost like a mediator. But at the end of the day, if the person says no, for us, we're not going to do work unless we have community support. We're a larger company, and we have many companies under this big umbrella. So if we're getting a lot of people screaming, "No, this isn't right for our community", that's not what we're going to do. That's not how we operate. We're here to get support, be transparent. That's why I'm here today at the earliest stage I can possibly be in a project to explain the process, educate people, and let them know sort of what we're doing. We're here to work with everybody. No problem.
So that was my first question. You want consent from the Municipal District?
That's right.
By that, we're speaking for everyone in that area? Okay.
Yes, within the act, now that we are within the municipality, we need consent to do the work. So right now, this, as you can imagine, has, I don't want to say caught off guard, but it's kickstarted things, obviously, with the natural resource and development. So they're trying, they're going to be talking to you next week on what that looks like, whether it's by permit or by project, but what does that look like? But yes, we should have something in writing saying, "Yes, I consent to the work that you're doing at this stage." It doesn't mean you're consenting today to the whole life of this process. It's really consenting to the work that we're planning right now.
Last.
That's what I'm told. It's still in the works, to be completely honest with you. I mean, it was different before when you were part of the municipality. Now that people have jumped in, it's kickstarted a few things, but I believe that's the intention, and they'll be able to answer that better. It's really all three of us together on that.
You still got a question? Councillor Heislip?
Yeah, Wade, you stole that one. I wondered if you said no, because there's a lot of people out there think that that's it, tell me he's going to move in and whether they get permission or not. And the dry tailings, there's a lot of acid generating rock in this area, too, because they ran into it in the highway, so that could be something. But you're going to, what triggers an EA for you guys? Do you always have to have an environmental assessment, or is it?
Get to that stage in the project, like, you got to keep in mind here, we're just drilling holes in the ground. So when you're drilling holes, it's not much different than drilling a hole for a well. You're just drilling in the ground right now. So you get involved in feasibility studies and EAs when you actually think this is economical and you're trying to get to that next step. So that's when you're making the decision to, do we have something economical and are we ready to look at potentially mining it? So that's quite a ways down the road, and that's why that process I put out there is 10 to 20 years. A lot of this is the permitting and the studies from third parties that need to be done. You don't just start doing these things willy-nilly. You have to go through the process to make sure it's safe, environmentally, are the First Nations happy, and communities happy? So in terms to answer your question, these are pegmatites. Again, these are boring rocks. There's nothing much in them. They're not base metals, so there's not a lot of sulfides in, there's no sulfides in them. And again, we don't use arsenic for the extraction. That's not a chemical extraction.
But the EA, it doesn't really, the product you're bringing out of the ground, it's the activities, right?
Sorry, say that again?
You're disturbing soil, you're disturbing wildlife, you're disturbing, you know, Austin noise pollution. So that would probably be your, you know, some of your triggers or some of the things that they'd be looking at, not necessarily your process of processing lithium or settling ponds or anything like that.
That's right. That, you probably do maybe a bulk sample of some kind. You do all those studies, but this is just drilling holes in the ground, so you're not getting to anything like that.
Down the road, when you start to go and do your actual, you know, setup and stuff like that, you'll have to do an EA, which will cover a decommissioning plan, too. That's what they always ask for.
A permit, obviously, to extract, which you would need all these things, like EAs to do them. You got it.
Earl? Councillor Eastman?
Hey, you. No, my concern, I've walked this ground before and quite a bit when I was a kid. So my thing, my concern would be this Splan Pond, any something that disturbs that because it's a tributary that actually feeds Dennis Stream and then runs into the St. Croix. So if there's no chemicals involved and stuff like that, it's what, like Dave was saying, what's brought out that we have to worry about. Rain will take out whatever, and away it goes. Just a note.
Can I ask you a question? So you say Dennis Stream, is that getting into our water supply?
Well, it runs right across the number one highway into Billy Weston Hill and right in down there where it feeds down to King Street.
Below the Maxwell Crossing. This would be west of the designated watershed. You're referring to, so this area is west, and that's a good question. I guess if we're going to get into some of those specifics, what I can tell you is that we did complete a hydro geological study from Gemtech. Gemtech is an engineering firm, and they already completed a study on the property. Again, because we are close to a community, we knew these questions would come out, but this conversation is triggered much earlier now that we're part of the municipality, but we've already gone ahead because we were close. We knew that was going to be a concern, even if we drilled a hole with the surface owner. People might be concerned about their wells and things like that. So we have the study done. There was no issues. We weren't surprised. Again, we're just drilling a hole, so that study's done. Or did I say Hyman, sorry, Hayman Hill? Okay, sorry.
Well, just, so are you strictly, like, once you start with lithium, that's it? Like, you know, if you find gold, is that going to change your plans or?
It's not of interest to us. Lithium is just the focus right now. To be honest with you, our real thing is that the world really doesn't need another gold mine. You know, what we really need is more battery metals. That's really where we're going, is green. So no, we're not interested in that, no.
Get that off your hands there. Oh, there we go. Sorry, councillor Otis.
My question is, what was the First Nations feeling on this project? And I wonder, too, in other municipalities, have you ever had potentially an indigenous group decide no and a municipality decide yes, and how does that actually work? Because I know that that collaboration is super important. It's always important for us to be respectful of where they stand on things like this. So I just wondered in the past, how do those conversations happen? How do we ensure that we're also all at the same cable or in the loop on that? Is that something that you usually bring us in later on together and facilitate the conversation just so we all have the same information and we're all on the same page? And how do you actually communicate your process with the public? If the public have questions about what's happening or a resident is hearing a lot of noise and they're frustrated and they want to reach out and learn more, do you have a direct contact person that we can pass off so that they can inquire directly versus be the middle man, I guess?
Great questions. I'll try and start with the first couple. I think the questions were, sorry, go ahead.
Just in the future, guys and girls, just one question time, we'll allow all the questions, but let's make it so we can all understand the answers. And you can get the first question, and we'll take follow-ups. Thanks.
I think the first question was asking about First Nation consultation compared to government. So basically, when you apply for a permit to do exploration, even something as drilling a hole, So basically, when you apply for, um, a permit to do expiration, even something as drilling a hole, you have conditions for that permit. And some of those conditions, like in this case, is getting consent from a municipality. Other ones are First Nation consultation. Always a good thing to start, um, as soon as possible. So we did this early days. As I mentioned, we reached out, um, to the Wollustakee. Um, we didn't have any issues. We've reached out to the Passamaquoddy and, as I mentioned, we've, we've reached out to the Passamaquoddy before too. We haven't gotten any response back, um, when we also worked here a few years ago down near, um, St. George area. So we haven't really heard back. Again, we're, we're very early here in the stage. Uh, we haven't even put in a permit yet to do anything. So, but we have reached out, we have had conversations, they've been positive. Um, there's been no real issues. Um, this is all private land that we're dealing with. Um, there's no crown land, for the area of interest right now, there is some crown land in there, but it's mostly private land. But of course, um, there, there, there was no issues really at this stage. And I think your other question is, how do people get a hold of them? So, so keep in mind, um, when these claims were staked, whether it was by us or a previous, um, company, you have to send out a letter of notification that the mineral claims were staked. So in those letters that everyone received, um, I get staples to mail them in registered mail so that, um, I have record that they've been mailed. I didn't just say that I mailed them. And, um, in those letters, it, it explains, um, when they were staked, it provides a map. Um, we also explained, um, the work that we were doing and I put in my phone number and email address. It would be me, um, that they can reach, um, anytime. So all of those surface owners, um, have been mailed. And specifically, as I mentioned, um, that area of interest, I've already met, um, in person with most of them except for one. Um, basically, uh, to talk about their properties. I didn't have any issues with anybody. Um, again, these are mostly wood lotted areas, so, uh, that there was no real issue with anybody. I don't know if there's any other question.
I think, I think there was one more at the end.
How all this communication happens?
Oh, no, that's great. I was just wondering, like, do you send out a letter to the residents that are just directly in that area to sort of create this? Or, um, you know, do, do those residents kind of have a key contact person after they get the initial letter if they have any questions? But that sounds great. I just wanted to see if registered mail was sent out or have you got in touch with those residents to let them know, um, just in case for some reason they're not available or watching council meetings or things like that and, you know, so they get something formal in the mail and know what's going on.
And keep in mind that not only are they aware it's been staked, I have to go meet in person and we have to come up with an agreement with that service owner if there's any land disturbance. So it's, it's, it's not possible to not know what's going on. You could see people walking through, um, the bush, um, you know, looking for rocks, but, uh, there's no ground disturbance happening without an agreement, let alone a conversation. It's part of the act.
Yes, go ahead, yeah.
Uh, just for the knowledge of counsel, the, the, the meeting next week that's been referred to a couple of times is a meeting between my office and the mining recorder's office, um, that was set up just last couple of days. Um, it's just kind of a preliminary meeting. I don't expect all of you to flood into my office for it. But if you do have questions, any specific questions about the regulations and that kind of thing, feel free to send me an email and I'll go over those with the, with the representatives that I'm talking to. And then from that meeting, we'll decide if there's a need to have a, a meeting with, with you guys directly. But, uh, if you do have questions, send them to me and I'll, I'll get the best answers I can for you.
And I should mention to follow up too, in those letters that we send out, I also include the government's two-page fact sheets in both English and French with their contact information so that you're not just, um, talking with the company. You actually have, um, a government representative that you can talk to as well. So that was all included in the letters as well.
Oh, you got one more?
Just one other question. Have we been approached by any other mining company? Like, has Galloway started their charge?
No, Mr. Kador was the first one to reach out, uh, to my office anyway, so, yeah.
Doing stuff in Oak Bay right down to the ledge. We're still in municipality now.
That would have been the minister of local government that approved that one. But, yeah. Yep. Okay. Thank you, Charles.
Their time and it was a pleasure. So I, please, uh, hope we can connect again in the future.
Thanks so much. Okay. All right, next up, uh, new business, uh, we got the conserve the court, uh, monthly update. Is there any update to give?
Worship, um, I do have a small update here. I'd like to get this in before so we can put it in the package, but I never got the, so I'll just read it out as, uh, try to be brief as possible. It's not very long. Just a reminder that the, uh, the MWBA tournament is April 27th to 28th. That's the women's basketball teams. So they're going to be meeting here. I think they're going to have a reception maybe on the 27th, so keep, uh, keep that in mind. And, uh, the group has, uh, conserve the court is, excuse me, has launched a local awareness campaign. So you'll be seeing a little bit of media. I think, uh, Deputy Mayor Wheaton said that she's seen something about it. So I think they're going to start, uh, doing some, uh, media releases, uh, potential court tours, posters, et cetera. And just to raise local awareness and, and excitement about the project and, and, uh, local committee, uh, has been, about, about 20 people has been started and will be working on several project initiatives, primarily as community host for events. And, uh, third update is, uh, of course, there was a lot of leaking in the roof and, uh, that was just pointed out, there's being taken care of, I guess. Jeff, like, and that's a side thing, but. Oh, finish your report and you can answer that. Yeah. And then anyway, uh, the work continues on the youth three-on-three tournament in August 17th. That'll be part of the Archie Celebrity Golf Tournament. And that will be led by Olympian Diane Norman. Uh, she's in charge of that. So she's doing a great job there. And, uh, encouraging meeting with RDC, Minister Savoy and the President and VP of RDC, funding our, the funding arm of the provincial government in Fragton on March 13th. No commitment, but there was a lot of interest. And, uh, that was, uh, we ended up hosting, uh, separately, the St. Stephen High School girls and fundy boys winning teams at the court. So they had a court tour and some counselors were there, including myself and, uh, your worship and, and Deputy Mayor Wheaton. Uh, and great group of kids. Uh, they were all excited then. They got the little, their, their two different plaques. They're from the provincial and federal government, so they're taking pictures and everything in the court. So there was pretty excitement over that. So that's a positive impact that the sport of basketball and great volunteer coaches have on the youth. So, and that's my report.
Jeff?
Yeah, just, uh, some, some supplemental, um, as far as the, the roof over there. Um, that's an insurance matter. The insurance company has contracted a roofer. Um, we had hoped that he'd be on site by now. Oddly with this number of storms we've had in the region, there's been a lot of work for roofing guys in the insurance business. Um, and so he's, he's got, he's been, he's a little delayed. Um, so we're still hoping they, they'll be here in short order. Couple of back and forths I've had with the, with the group, um, trying to figure out the, the, the operational arrangements that need to be done. I had, uh, requested a, a, a date for a sit-down and coincidentally, Mr. Fulton had requested a date for a sit-down for a different issue. Hopefully we can get that sorted out and everybody get in a room, um, to, to put all, put a bunch of issues on the, on the table. Um, I know they had gotten kind of directed towards some possible funding, um, through FCM, through the Green Municipal Fund. You know, someone said something to somebody else who said something to them. Um, it happens to be programs I'm quite familiar with. I don't necessarily think they're the best fit for the project, um, but if we do get together, I can walk them through why I don't think they're the best fit. But so there is, uh, and I also did approve a, um, a study to be conducted with, uh, conserve the court funds. It's another level of, uh, financial feasibility analysis, um, to make sure the business case that's being constructed is, is solid. Um, it was an update to some old work that was, that was done years ago. Um, so that's been approved and, and they're good to proceed with that from, from the conserve the court monies as well. So lots of things have, um, have picked back up since, uh, Mr. Fulton's presentation at council. And, uh, but, uh, Counsel Hyslop, if you can help us all get on the right, on the same page as far as picking a date, as far as sitting down, um, I think that would be very helpful. So if you can help me with that, that would be appreciated. But otherwise, um, things have, at least from my, uh, my side of the equation, things have picked up a fair bit since the, the presentation at council, which is a good thing.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Counsel Hyslop. Okay. All right. Next up, we got the Charlotte County Courthouse and Community Center. Probably be me to speak on that, I guess. Uh, yeah. Oh, is that a question about basketball court? Okay, sorry.
That's okay. It's just a question because I don't necessarily know how insurance works, but let's say when the initial damage happened and it was basically a roofing issue in, um, December and it, it damaged the actual court that just had been incurred while we were waiting for the roofers to come. Is that like a secondary process that you need to send an update on secondary things that have happened based on the insurance company not following up with the roofing contract? Like, I just don't know anything about that and I don't know how it works, but that would be my main concern is just the hard floor, obviously, in court. So I'm just curious about that. Jeff, if you, if you have an answer to that, great. If you don't, that's okay too. I was just wondering.
Yeah, uh, great question. Um, it's been an, I'll put it this way, it's been an ongoing, ongoing dialogue with, especially with the delay of the roofer's arrival. As to, there was some damage interior already. Um, there was a, we are worried that it's been exacerbated, but that, that conversation has been ongoing throughout this process as to, um, you know, keeping the insurance folks, uh, updated to what's going on onsite. And actually, I believe one of the insurance folks actually was here on other business and, and visited a number of our facilities, um, just this week, actually. Um, so there's been, that, we're going to do the best we can with, through the insurance program. It's sometimes frustrating, um, the way these things work, but, um, we're of the same mind, I think, as far as the, uh, making sure that things get covered. You know, that may have been damaged due to the delays that were not within our control.
And I know that the maritime women's league, um, my partner actually tried to sponsor the event. When she called, they said we were, there was a mayor's ball that was happening at the court. I hadn't heard anything about that, but I also wondered that, like, if there is some sort of reception that's happening afterwards, maybe we could also offer them, you know, the supportive space at the civic center. If just with the state of how things look right now, I don't know if it will look like cleaned up and nice and be the best place for a reception. So maybe that's something Counsel Hyslop too, if we just chat with the group about and see, you know, what the state of the place is for that upcoming tournament. And the mayor's, I don't know anything about the mayor's ball. I was just told that we're, we're having the mayor's ball, so.
I'll, I'll save the mayor from answering that one. Um, there's on, uh, we, we do have a room, um, set aside for, for them for a reception. I don't know that it's been initially labeled the mayor's ball, but, um, but there is a room set aside and, uh.
Maybe you should, uh, you should actually, or maybe Dave just mentioned a Richard, because when they initially said, like, there was a mayor's ball in reception, I had never heard anything about that. And then I thought, if, if the mayor doesn't know that he has a ball, then that's going to be an issue.
It's, it's an ongoing dialogue between the organizers and our events team, um, as to what's going to happen. But there is a room, uh, earmarked for them for the event. That's, I can confirm that.
Or a gown. You never know. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Um, listen, um, your worship, I have to sign off because I have another commitment based on my conference here. So I'm just going to sign off early, but thanks everyone and I'll catch the rest of the meeting after.
All right, thanks. Good work up there in Moncton. Thanks. Okay. Oh, that's right. Yeah. Just, our face is looking back at us. Okay. Okay, so we're down to the basketball court again. So we'll go to the courthouse. Uh, what, what, what this is, I, I wanted this in the package so you guys can just be updated on what's going on. You guys can read, read the, read the package. But what, what it is, uh, obviously, we want to get some court ac, court action in our community. Uh, and the, uh, the old courthouse in St. Andrews is putting a proposal out there and needs the support of all of us in the region to, uh, have a couple of days a week of court activities or that's court sessions or whatever you call it. I think it's a great idea. Uh, just want to make sure you guys are aware that that's going on. I've been working with, uh, uh, the, the people that are doing it and they're keeping me informed and this is what I know up to date. So, uh, so hopefully they get some a, action out of that because, uh, courthouse in Charlotte County is very, very important. And I, as I've been saying, you know, we, we've been talking about policing issues. Well, seeing court happen and it, that the social aspect of that is very important. Because if you don't see justice served, your community doesn't feel it's getting served. So this is, this, and of course, cost savings for us, you know, the travel and stuff. And who knows, maybe we'll get one back here too. Let's just do one courthouse at a time. So, so thank you, uh, that's Randy DePaolo who's been reaching out to me and, uh, and, and he's working with the, uh, with the, some other judges in, in the area. And, uh, yeah, so just wanted to keep everyone informed and put it in the package. Okay, and next one up is, uh, I was going to be you, Jeff, I believe, purchasing card policy, second draft. Yeah.
Yeah, so we, uh, we brought this to you before. There were some, some old relic stuff that was in there that we had to, from the, uh, from the sample document that we'd used, um, that we had to clean up. Um, so we, uh, we, we went through, there's a bunch of grammatical things as well. Celeste was good enough to, to clean up for me. And, um, so we're bringing it back for another look before, before, hopefully, we can, uh, consider moving it to council for adoption. It's, this is a, a, a big issue for, um, the corporate services department. It should have been put in place before the purchasing cards were ever handed out years ago and we just haven't had a good policy ever on the books. Not going to say that what we have here is perfect, but at least if we have something on the books, we can work with it and we can, we can fix it along the way with, with amendments from time to time if need be. Um, but it does put a lot of more responsibility on the cardholders than we currently have, which I think is a, a, a really good thing, um, because I know corporate services has struggled sometimes with reconciliations and things like that as far as, and even, you know, well, you know, has the frustration gotten to the point where we should remove their card? Well, we didn't have a process to even have that conversation. This provides us those kind of rules and standards to, to live by. And actually, you, you'll see there's a draft agreement in there for cardholders to even sign, um, acknowledging their responsibilities. So, uh, which of course is a, a benefit for performance management type issues down the road if that, if it comes to that. So, um, happy to take any questions or any suggestions for amendments, um, but we did want to bring this back and put it back on the table.
Counsel Eastman?
How many cards are we talking about, Jeff?
Currently, I believe we have seven, um, that are, that are across the organization. Um, I carry the, the largest allotment and mainly that is to, uh, the mayor will know and it recently, not to, told us in the past, um, the way our bank works with it, it's frustrating. If, um, it, it'll lock down all the cards, even if one card's out of, out of line for some reason. Um, or we go over the global limit because of a payment processing delay. Um, so because I do the least amount of purchasing, I hold a very large balance, but keeps, creates a buffer across the organization. Uh, so the mayor doesn't end up going, trying to do a, 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 a meeting lunch or something and get his credit card declined. So, uh, and then I, so I have one, the events department has, uh, has one, um, corporate services carries one, a couple of small ones in public works, um, for daily type stuff. But, um, we do, um, all the cards are issued based on a joint review and recommendation from the treasurer and myself to make sure that we're comfortable with the, uh, the risk management portfolio for what we've got out there. And we review that at least yearly, if not, uh, anytime we have a request for a change or a new card being issued.
Yeah, ju- ju- just share the, it's actually better controlled than what we have. Can you kind of allude to that? Because right now, they just go and they charge it and it's just, it's just, it's, it's more control because you know the person and anyway, just kind of maybe share a little bit more about that, just to.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't, we haven't had too, pretty much any trouble with, you know, misuse of cards. It's more, uh, tends to be human nature on the reconciliation side and on keeping the receipts and being responsible for those receipts and getting it back. And the big thing there is, of when it comes to receipts, is our ability to, to recollect some of the GST and HST charges. If we have proof that we paid it, we have, we can actually recover a lot of it. If we lose those receipts and we can't balance things, um, the, the, the citizens are out money actually from the rebates program. That was the biggest frustration. You know, it's, but it is a matter of, um, just stepping up the accountability level on these cards. This is, this is public money and we, we as staff have to, have to make sure we are treating it as such. And it, it can become, without rules, it becomes very easy to pull out a card out of your wallet and, and not worry about, you know, dealing with other permissions that you may have to get if you go a different route as far as your, your purchasing, right? So we want to make sure that what we're purchasing is, it doesn't need to go through tender, doesn't need to go through proposals, doesn't need to go through quotes, whatever, or we've already done that and we have standing offers. Um, we want to make sure that we're, we're really tight on how we're doing that. It's, it's fair to the public, it's good use of public money and it's ultimately holding people accountable for their actions.
Counsel Harding?
Thank you.
Counsel Green?
Yeah, I think, I think I brought this up.
Yeah, I think I brought this up before, but just on the reconciliation aspect of it, if stuff's missing and you can't reconcile, the bill gets paid, we don't get charged interest, right?
This time I understood the question the first time. Absolutely. We always pay the bill on time. We do have the clause in there that the department's responsible for any fees. That would be a very exceptional circumstance, but we do want to make sure that if it does, if there is an issue that pops up, that the right department is being held responsible for what goes on in their department.
So speaking of departments, like you got cross-departmental things, and so is there a way you can keep it in the department after they do the purchase? Do they have to register it under each department? Or is that even an issue? Maybe they're all under one?
So the cards themselves are all one account, one account with the bank. But what happens is every transaction gets coded by the purchaser to a specific line item in our budget. So everything has to be coded to a budget to make sure that we're not exceeding budgets or spending authorities. So that's how we keep everything tracked, which is why, again, why the reconciliation side of the program is so important, so we're not trying to chase things down. And poor corporate is doing journal entries because they had to, they had to guess, and then they find out later it was actually someone else's charge.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, counsel. All right. Next up, SMART Goals Worksheet Sample.
So what you have in your package is kind of the next step of taking the discussions we've had recently on goal-setting and turning it into an active document that has tracking and accountability attached to it. I've produced 10 of them so far on goals that we went over at our session, many of which have a lot of actions already on them, to be perfectly honest with you. As we said at the meeting, that which gets measured gets done. And even within my own office, I can say we've gotten a lot of work done since we started laying out the plan and working, and working the plans that we put on paper. So I wanted to show this to you, because one of the things I would like to do is, whether it's here, whether it's at council, we can decide the best forum, is this will be the reporting back structure. So you see that bottom section where we have measures? That's our logbook. That's our, I met with so-and-so to discuss this on this date, towards whatever step we're on. And the key steps, lay out what the plan of attack is on the item, and the proposed dates. And then you see the little checkmark box that, like, if we, if that's been done, we check it off. So you get a visual on your key goals at whatever reporting period you guys choose. But this is kind of what I'm proposing as our constant feedback loop to you, as here's what we've done towards getting these goals done. You know, if we have a delay because of a timing thing, then we can tell you, oh, we got delayed because, you know, we didn't get any proposals on our RFP, so we got to reset. And we can update whether that goal needs to be set aside or the timeline's changed. So if, I want to bring this to you before I kind of get too many of these done, but I'm finding it very, very helpful as far as an administrative tool in the office, as far as laying out my work plans. And so if it's, if it makes sense to you folks, we'll roll it out to everything and start building from here.
Not that I liked it this way anyway, but I just, this way things are going, I got to keep it more controlled. So Counsel Greenlaw? No. No, I don't.
Anyway, so this would be something that we would see monthly? Like, these be updated? Is there a timeline when you'd update them?
Yeah, so I'm open to how frequently you want to see them. One concept would just be that any of the ones that are, that are active, because I think there's going to be a bunch of these goal sheets that are built for 2025, 2026, as we look at our longer-term goals. The ones that are active could very easily just be attached to the back of my CAO's report every month. And, you know, with, you know, maybe the, any of the new entries in the, in the, in the measures log can be a different color, just so you can see what the newest entries look like. But that's for us, kind of the way I was looking at thinking about approaching it.
Counsel Heislop?
Yeah, yeah, I like this. And I did my homework before. I didn't get to the last strategic plan, but I did my homework. I felt like I was back in university doing an assignment. I passed in by the end of the week, right? But I got it done, and I'd like to see what the results are of that, because I wasn't there, right? And I'd like to see what kind of goals that everybody came up with and what, so if you get an opportunity, I would like to sit down or whatever, or probably.
Sure. So the way I'm approaching it, and I mentioned to the folks at the meeting, we went through in somewhat detail probably about 10 goals, which communitally are the 10 that are in this book right now, because those are the ones I focused on getting onto the sheets. And then the staff, the department heads have now been assigned to go through any of the ones we didn't get to and kind of build their own approach to those goals that were collected from all you. So we have, but I guess what I'm saying is, in the next of the, there, I've told them by the next committee of the hall meeting, so a month from now, all the goal sheets are to be filled out so that we can bring them to you. Because one of the things we're going to do is, we're going to fill out the tactics stuff about what we think the key milestones are to get to the goal. We, I've told them not, I've asked them not to fill in the timelines, because I think that's a prioritization process for you folks. So you're going to see everything that got brought together, and then we're going to talk, you guys are going to set the timelines of when these goals should be laid out on a calendar, so we know what we're prioritizing when. So you're going to get a nice document that shows everything wrapped up together.
Twenty, should be possibly 27 SMART Sheets. And some of them are probably duplicates, so you're probably down.
I will say, as I said to the group, it was amazing how few duplicates there were in the homework that was assigned. We had, I was hoping to have three goals that really rose to the top, and it was a very flat layout when you looked at the graph, but it was good. I mean, it said we had a lot of things that we can, we can and should be working on. Now it's just prioritizing what gets done first and what gets done fifth. So, but yeah, and anytime you want to swing by the office, I can, I'm happy to show you the raw data sheets if you want, what came in as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Next up, we got the draft resolution for delegation of authority to waive interest charges. Where's yours, Jeff?
Thank you, your worship. As noted in the report, this comes from the revision that we did to the water bylaw, where we had, we put in some works there for, when we were making payment arrangements and things to recover funds inside the utility. It said council held the authority to waive interest charges if they deemed it appropriate, or could delegate that to a designated officer. At the time, we said, we're going to leave it as it was, that wording, but we were going to consider a delegation resolution once we had the accounts write-off policy in place, because it set different levels for different members of staff. So this here is a proposal to mirror the same authority levels that are in the bad debt write-off policy to the, to the interest, basically the interest waiving part of this bylaw. So we just wanted to bring that back to committee, make sure that that was still a comfortable, a comfortable tactic from you folks before it went to council.
Okay. Yes, sure. Counsel Greenlaw?
So we were, I think we also asked to make sure that if they're, if they're written off, we get a report to know what was written off, like, because whether that be a line item in the, in the financial update or something like that, it'd be just nice to know what we're, what we're sacrificing it.
Yeah, the bad debt policy does require a minimum of semi-annual reports. And I think as we said, as we start getting into fixing some of the issues that are out there, that you probably see a little bit more regularly in the early days, because there, it's looking like there's going to be a number that come up in the early days, and then it'll hopefully be able to back off into a semi-annual type schedule.
Okay, all right. Okay, next up is Community Safety Standing Committee update. Okay. We had our last committee meeting this week, Monday. And when I say last, it's, 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 there's been a lot of issues, not issues, not with the committee, but with, one of the main ones that we were struggling with is the public awareness. And so we're going to bring it back to committee of the whole, so all councils involved. We want, still want the public interaction with the folks around the table to keep working with us and, and work with counselors that they feel comfortable with, or many counselors, whatever that may be, but keep involved with, especially on the, the items that we've already started on, obviously. We did, we talked about the needleboxes, and that's another thing is, is we had a great presentation on that, but the thing was, the public didn't see it. And in here, when we talk about it here, well, we're on camera, and so the world can see it, and it would have been a good benefit. So we may have to bring her back from Avenue B. I keep saying eight, but B and eight are the same, but it's Avenue B. And so, yeah, so the other thing, it wasn't following our bylaw very well, or at all, I guess I should say. So that was a little thing we had to take care of. And we started losing some people, too, actually, you know, they started losing either interest or commitment. There's a lot of commitment, and some have actually even moving away. So anyway, so we want to keep who is left involved, and or anyone, any citizen, reach out to a counselor, you know, and, and that you're comfortable with. So I would like to publicly thank the group for all their hard work, because it was a great learning experience for myself and council and the people in the group. And thank you for all the work and dedication on that. And I hope that you stay active and work along with us. And did I miss anything? Yeah?
Just from, for our clarification from administration, my understanding from our discussions previously is that the Community Safety Committee mandate essentially will be a standing matter on committee of the hall meetings moving forward, correct?
Basketball court, we're going to have a standing, so we can keep updating it 100%.
Just want to make sure that we had that direction recorded.
Yeah, because we still got a lot of work to do. And that was the other problem with the committee, is they, you know, there's great ideas, but they cannot, it was hard for them to make a decision, because they don't know the outcome of the budget and all that stuff. So now we can get into the facts here and get some of those things active quicker. Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Like, I'm not part of that committee, but would it be okay if I attended some meetings? Like, I feel like I'm, I don't know anything but...
Yeah, it's going to be right, like today. It's going to be on our committee of the whole. I mean, we may have to have a special meeting, depending on the topic at times, but yeah. Yeah, and I don't know, Joyce, did I, Counsel Wright, did I miss anything? No? Okay. And... That's it? Oh, hold on. So we don't, we still need to go into close? Okay. No. What's that? All right, so can I, as per the pursuant to the Section 68 of the local governments, or Bracket 1, the Local Governments Act, the council moved to a closed session for the purpose of discussing a land disposition matter. Counsel Heislop, Counsel Wright, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.